Welcome to all of you who are with us this evening and to the audience that will be viewing us on the late broadcast. Allow me to introduce the board members at the table with me. From my right, we have Ross Harris, Janelle Carter, and Mike Miller. From the left, we have Karina Hernandez, Sean Heitman, Ben Fletcher. Here at the center table with me, on my right is Paulette Newbold, the Secretary of the Board, and to my left is Dr. Theran Schutte, the Superintendent of Schools, and I am B. Niblock. We have one student representative with us this evening, and that's America Domingos. Do you know if we'll see the others?
Yeah, they're on their way.
Okay, well, we'll see them when they get here. The pink sheet on the speaker's table is for anyone to sign up who would like to address the Board during public comment or to visit with us during any of the agenda items. You'll be given five minutes to speak during public comment. According to Board policy, we are not able to respond, but we thank you for your comments anyway. Please read with me the mission of the Marshalltown Community School District. "We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences." Stand as you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, my nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yeah, within the Policy section, we're going to pull 605.4 R graduation requirements as we get some additional adjustments moving into that policy.
May I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Miller, Fletcher, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries seven zero.
We have a recognition this evening. We're very proud to announce that Business Manager Randy Denham has successfully completed all requirements of the Iowa School Business Management Academy as presented by the Iowa School Business Officials Association. Paulette can speak a little bit more intimately in terms of what that means. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'm so glad you're here.
I'm glad, I am glad to be here.
Do you want to share a little bit about what's involved with that?
Sure. So like I said, with, in the state of Iowa, with the school business officials, there's a four-year academy that school business officials can go through. The first two years are required now under law to be taken, but you can go on and complete the other two years, complete four years. And then with those four years, you have the options to take proficiency exams. When you pass those proficiency exams each year, then you graduate with proficiency and then you are allowed to be a mentor to other aspiring school business officials as well as be able to teach at some of the courses at the School Business Management Academy. So I've been fortunate enough over the years to have several colleagues, peers, and mentors to allow me to get to where I'm at. So this is just kind of my way of paying it forward.
So you have the opportunity to take proficiency exam. I love the word you used.
It is, it is optional to take those proficiency exams, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
There is a graduate level for the School Business Management Academy, so we continue every year to get additional opportunities to learn.
And to take exam.
Yes.
Okay, the public hearing for the 2019-20 school year calendar is open. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the calendar for 2019-20?
I'm used to doing city council meetings where you have to say your name, but I don't really care. I'm Joe Prowine, I'm a teacher in the district. My husband is also a teacher in a neighboring school district. And I know that we've had conversations, as far as the Board has had conversations about spring break and when they should have it, whether it should be with Regents or whether it should be with the community school, or the community college here in town. And I have to say, it's very difficult being a teacher and teaching in Marshalltown and your spouse is a teacher somewhere else, or your kids go to colleges somewhere else, because then you don't have the same spring break. And it would be nice to see that if we could all someday have the same spring break, that would be really nice, because then we're not splitting our time between family and work and our obligations. So that's just, I want to get food for thought on that, because it's very hard to be two places at once. I can't even take a trip with my family, I can't do anything fun with my family, because they're all in school when I'm out and vice versa. Just want to say that.
Any other comments? Then the public hearing on the 2019-20 school calendar is closed. Moving on to the consent agenda. Looking at the minutes of December 3rd, are there any additions or corrections?
There are none.
Are there any items of note and personnel?
There are none.
Taking place for lots of people.
Looking at inter-agency contracts and agreements. We have three contracts for open enrollment on three special needs children. Open enrollments, we have one in and one out for next year. Are there any items of note and bills? Any questions on the financial report?
Another question, I liked it, the way we had it, the way you did it.
Thank you.
This time, Paulette, it was really, I thought, helpful and insightful.
Yeah, I'd agree.
We're working on it.
There will be 272 student desks from the high school listed as obsolete. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Carter Hernandez, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries seven zero. Nobody on the list. Anel, come visit with us.
Anytime, anytime.
Really?
Good evening, thanks for allowing us to come here and take a few minutes of your time to share one positive thing going on at Woodbury Elementary. We're just going to highlight one little aspect that we have. And Julie Thede, our instructional coach, is going to help us through this. We also have in our audience our first grade team, and we brought, we invited them. They're not going to come up here and speak, but we invited them because we are going to highlight first grade as we're walking you through this process that we're just going to present. So they're here just as long support for us and recognition. The very first slide is just a straight definition of the multi-tier system of supports as defined by the Iowa Department of Education. I'm sure you've had time to look it over and read it, I'm not going to read it for you. But it's also known as the RTI, or Response to Intervention. So that's what we're going to highlight today for you and how that's done and the processes and procedures that we take in order to implement this piece in our building, so. Also, the Iowa Department of Iowa of Education also highlights some key components. So these are the five key components that they work under as far as the MTSS. If we are not, we'll just address it as an MTSS process or framework. So these are the five key components that they have outlined as being essential to implement the multi-tier system of support in a building, so. One of the things that we do as far as these, like, for example, number one, oop, I'm sorry, can't go back. Those slides are a little too fast. For the evidence-based, we have the workshop approach and then we have the really great reading. Those are some examples of what we do to meet number one. Number two, we use FAST as our universal screening tool for our students, but we use it both in English and in Spanish. Number two, address number three, again, really great reading, Haggerty, also press, and some, but this is also an area that we would like to improve upon, so. And then to meet number four, we fast-progress monitor all our students based on what the state has required us to do. We also progress monitor some Spanish assessments based on the needs and the targeted instruction that they are receiving and if it fits to that need or not. And then to meet number five, the teachers analyze their own data and process the information through a teacher leadership team that we meet with them and also our data wall. So we'll discuss those in a moment, just let me go along.
So, one of the ways that we are trying to meet those five components that the state has outlined as essential for MTSS is ten success factors that we have studied through Susan Hall. She has this new book that just came out in 2018 that talks about schools that are using MTSS and the schools that are most successful with it. And she's outlined these ten success factors that she feels like or that research has shown is essential for making sure that that block of time is used to the most or the best for the kids. And so we're going to walk through these ten factors and then talk a little bit about how we're using those at Woodbury and what that kind of looks like. And this, I also wanted to highlight, I got to see this woman, Susan Hall, in person because a group of instructional coaches had the opportunity to go to a literacy conference last year. It's called Plain Talk Literacy. She was there, talked about these ten success factors, so it was very good to be able to bring that back and implement it into our building and work through it. So what her research has shown, that the first factor is that you need to be grouping students by skill deficit. So you need to be looking at what are kids, what are the skills that they need help with, and then putting them into like groups. Then number two, she says that you need to use diagnostic assessments. So to figure out what those skill deficits are, that you need to have diagnostic assessments that helps you to pinpoint what those skills are. Number three, she recommends implementing a walk-to-intervention model. So what that means is that you take all of the kids in a grade level and think about them as one large group and then group them according to their needs. So you're not looking at just grouping kids in one classroom, but you can put all the classrooms together. They become our kids and not my kids. And you're looking at the needs of them and grouping them into, maybe there's two from this classroom and they're going to go with these other two kids because they have the same need. She also talks about monitoring that progress then with an appropriate assessment that it's important as you are teaching that skill, that you're also monitoring it so you know when to move on or when to think about doing, teaching it in a different way if kids aren't getting it. Number five, flood the intervention block with extra instructors. So that means that we are, you're using all of your resources within, you're building all of those certified teachers. So if it's a title teacher, an ELL teacher, a special ed teacher, those teachers are coming during that block of time to help with intervention. Using intervention time wisely, is number six. Number seven, be aware of what makes interventions effective. So we're studying that on how we can best use that time and making sure that the instruction is the best that it can be for the kids to move them as fast as possible. Number eight, providing teachers with intervention lesson materials, so making sure teachers have what they need so that they can teach to those skill deficits. Number nine, invest in professional development, so making sure that you are building that teacher capacity. And then ten is inspecting what you expect, so going back and making sure that you have all of those other factors in place and checking in and making changes accordingly. So next, we're going to talk about those factors and what they look like specifically at Woodbury, what we have incorporated and what we have some goals that, around that, what we want to improve upon. So the first one, we do have skill-based grouping. So we're taking, we've taken a look at what kids need and we've grouped them accordingly. And there are groups, and you'll see in a moment, that are small, a few kids, and we have groups that are larger, depending on what those needs are, up to 20 or 21 kids.
And it ranges, it goes from, you know, skills deficit and also skill extension, so if they're on target or above, we are also planning accordingly for them as well.
And those skill-based groups are also, they receive them some in English and some in Spanish. So we're giving interventions in both languages. That skill placement is data-driven, so we're using diagnostic assessment data. So we're using that screening data first, and then kids that are showing us that they need some extra help, then we're giving them a diagnostic assessment so we can pinpoint what it is that they need. The teacher collaboration, it talked about the walk-to-intervention model, we are using that. So we're taking, we have three homeroom classrooms, we're looking at those kids all together and then grouping them where they need to be at, so they're seen as our kids, not my kids or your kids. We're using progress monitoring tools based on the data. So we're using FAST progress monitoring and then teachers also have, they're able to determine how they're going to use some formative assessment to make decisions on when they need to move on, when kids have it and when kids still need some more help. We've flooded that time, and we're going to talk a lot about first grade and what that looks like, but we have title teachers that are coming in during that time. We have ELL teachers that are coming in during that time and special education teachers. We also, even at the kinder level, we have our specialists, like the PE teacher takes a group of kids, the music teacher, the art teacher, they're all helping at that block of time too, at the kinder level. That block is a 30-minute block in each of the grade levels. So they all have, they have a 30-minute time period that we call MTSS, when that flooding of certified support happens. So they, during that 30 minutes, they have instruction from the teacher and then that's also when we're using our Lexia Core 5, they're also doing that during that time. And so, number seven, we talked about how you need to be aware of what makes intervention effective. One of the things that we listed on there was that differentiated accountability training. So that was some training that we attended through the AEA, which really helped build capacity within our staff. We were able to take a team of teachers to that training a year and two years ago, the last two years, and that helped staff understand the importance of intervention and how that should look and how that, those building blocks should look. Number eight, having that effective lesson plans. We are doing that with some specific targeted skills. So we do have lesson plans available within the Really Great Reading, which is new curriculum this year. Teachers are able to access Haggerty, which is a newer curriculum as well. And then we have press, also lessons that they can use, that was from last year that we implemented. That's somewhere where we need to continue to grow. I don't think we have that completely in place, where they're able to access those resources, but we're working on that. And number nine, investing in that professional development. We have this year been working on the PLC process, and that helps with this intervention model because teachers are really taking a look at what we expect kids to learn. How will you know that they're learning it? What are you going to do if they're not learning it? And what are you going to do if they know it or they already know it? How are you going to keep pushing them? So we've been using that as a way to build capacity among teachers, so to know and to approve their intervention instruction. And then the last one, we use coaching cycles and conversations to help support teachers and to inspect what we expect in that time.
You said that your music and PE teachers were involved, just at the kinder level?
Just at the kinder level.
So how many staff are we looking for the other levels?
We'll show you just. If you go, yep, this is, thank you, this is the slide we need. We are highlighting first grade, so if you click on the link that says MTSS first grade groups. We have nine groups total, ten certified teachers that flood, what they call flood, that time block of 30 minutes. Right now, of course, for confidentiality purposes, we just used first initial. And these are amount of teachers, so the teacher's names up at the top and their groups are down below. Like Julie explained earlier, it ranges the number of students per teacher. If there's a letter behind the initial letter, that's a reading level they have on there. If there's numbers, if there's four profile numbers, that's their Opal 21 scores that they have on there. So we are looking at all the data that we have available for students to be able to group them accordingly. And so, the way it's outlined here is we have, you see the titles under each teacher. We have focus, we have a reading, range level, reading level, and then a progress, a PM is Progress Monitoring Tool, so that's the assessment piece. So each teacher is responsible for those areas. So they have very targeted skills or concept that they're concentrating on. They have the range of levels according to the groups. And then we also support the teachers with developing a tool that's going to help them assess their instruction to see how, if they need to address any discrepancies still or if they can move forward with their learning, so. And yeah, if you see the second column on the top, we have a group, that's Mrs. Bergman, one of our first grade teachers, and actually Julie Thede also supports this particular grade level. And we have 20-plus kids in that group, and that is a comprehensive or core instruction group, so they're on grade level or above. And so they have a large number of students, and they can talk specifically about what they do in that group. So for that group, it's not a skill deficit that we're addressing, but it's more of a skill extension or an enrichment time for them. So we are looking at first grade common core standards, making sure that they have those skills that they need for on level. And then we're also looking at the progression on, okay, so this, if we're working on this standard, it's a first grade standard, looking at the second grade standard, what can we push them towards? What can we keep them moving and accelerate them?
And this is a typical form that we use for the, each grade level, kinder through fourth. So each grade level have, with the number of staff members that are involved. And then after looking through all the data and grouping students accordingly, we divide on who is going to teach and what they're going to teach and how they're going to, they're going to assess or progress monitor. So you asked about kinder, if you click back and you go to the kinder one, that is the one where we have the most staff members available. You can see there's 18 groups and there's 18 certified staff. Same document should pop up, yep, with a teacher's name at the top again. And then these are all initials, they're not all S. I started putting student, and I'm like, why am I doing this? Why don't I just erase them first, so.
So this first shows a diagnostic assessment that we gave that comes from the Really Great Reading curriculum. So it's the foundational, kinder foundational skills assessment. So they did the screening on FAST, and then we gave them this diagnostic assessment so that we could really pinpoint what their skill deficits were. And then we were able to group them according to their skill deficits. You can see the, like, if they were low in functional vocabulary is the FB, and then the other one's low in PA is phonemic awareness. So those were specific skill areas that we then were able to group them according to what they needed and then assign a teacher that would be able to address that.
So if you keep scrolling down, then that's when you start seeing the division by teacher. And this is a living document, so you'll see strike groups, so it's, they're fluid. As we see kids grow in their abilities and skills, we may regroup them to a different group and so on and so forth, so that, that's why you might see some strikers in certain students and so on. Or new to the group as of, with the highlights and stuff. So this is a group that has the most, with 15 certified, and that includes all our specialists in there. And what our specialist focus on is, we may have a group, for example, Mr. Bear, who's our PE teacher, we may have a group of kindergartners that still need some growth motor skills, large motor skills. And so we have selected certain students that are, develop that skill with him at the same time as developing some reading skills, so they might be focusing on some phonemic awareness along with those large motor skills that he's teaching them. Same with Mrs. Parks, the art teacher, and Ms. Thomas, the music teacher, small group of kids, and they might need some fine motor work, but at the same time, they're working with phonemic awareness and sound, so. If you go back to the PowerPoint, unless you have any questions about this.
You stagger those interventions so that it's a different timeframe for each grade one?
Yes. So that we're able to flood in the title teachers and what, so.
Yep, so that's the, the.
Often do you assess the kids to either move them up or down?
The screening window is three times a year. And so that gives you just some, that screening information. But they're doing progress monitoring daily, weekly, their own type of tool, whatever they have for what their focus is. The teacher has selected a progress monitoring and formative assessment that she's using all the time. And then the FAST progress monitoring is once a week.
So do students have to wait if they master a skill for which they got put in one of those groups? Or they move sometimes out into a different group?
Yep, they're moved all the time.
We've moved kids in and out already. We can't wait until winter to give that screening.
Exactly, yep.
So we're using all the other formative assessments to help us with that. And the FAST progress monitoring assessment, too. So that was the first column as far as groups. The second column where it says Lexia and then it says teacher monitoring, we have specifically. So our block is 30 minutes, and we give 20 minutes of this direct instruction on these specific skills that the students need. And then the last 10 minutes, or the first part of their group, the first part or this last part, they log into their Lexia, and it is purposeful with having a teacher there. So the teacher is monitoring their Lexia at all times, so they can address, what we call the red apples is where they're getting stuck on a certain skill. And they can have a one-on-one conference with the child or tutor the child quickly through that skill so they don't get stuck in that phase and they can move forward with their Lexia. Also, the teacher can use this information to see how they are performing and applying the skills that they're being taught on to their Lexia and vice versa. Then the teacher can align whatever's occurring in Lexia into their instruction, in their direct instruction with their 20 minutes. Then the last column where it says PLC process, we're doing more of a trial. I know we've had a huge launch this year with our professional learning communities in the area of math, but we are also addressing the four essential questions in our reading. We're not doing it as often as we should be or as it is recommended, but we are leading our teachers to have that same mindset and to always answer those four questions when we are meeting with them in, when we're regrouping our students and discussing their progress.
Questions for Anel or Julie?
This is all, this is supplementary time? This is on top of their typical?
Yep, this is on top of core, yep, so this is.
This is an addition to.
Yep.
So is this the first year you guys have done this?
No. This is the second year that we've kind of done this model where we've flooded it. But we've had MTSS for quite a while, yep. But this model where we've staggered the blocks and, and I think we were getting better and better at it.
All the time, growing. Three years ago, we had the same block, but we weren't flooding as much or it was very minimal. But last year, we started doing this more, and this year is the same as last year. We're just adding more components like our PLC process and.
What the interesting is how it comes out.
Thank you very much.
Hello. Okay, so today, we're gonna give you our, an update on the MHS, sorry, Marshawn High School. So, today we really wanna talk about STEP, since we're doing a lot throughout the year. So, if you don't know what STEP is, STEP is Students Teaching Empowering Philanthropy. So, STEP is a diverse group of high school students, and the Martha Ellen Ty Foundation and the Community Foundation gives STEP ten thousand dollars each year to use throughout their granting process. So, we would get five oh one C three organizations, nonprofit organizations, that will apply to our application. And from that application, what they tell us, and like, what their organization is about, we'll see which one, like, is affecting the community more, you know? Some might talk about poverty, some might talk about hunger, human trafficking. So then, we'll see which one will benefit the community more, not just the school district, but throughout the community. And also, our program coordinator is Heidi Dahl, and she works with the Community Foundation as well. So this year, an anonymous donor allowed STEP to adopt four families. So, we went to Walmart, and we had a list of people, family members, what they needed, what, what they wanted. Also, they had some Christmas stuff that they wanted. So, the members bought and wrapped gifts from Marshawn. The families that were linked with the House of Compassion that sign up to be one of the families here. So, some of the stuff that we purchased were paper towels, plates, and also other stuff like toys, you know? And then, some of these kids didn't really know that they were getting all this stuff. So it's really nice to know that we go out in the community, we buy stuff, and we don't really think of it as much, but to them, it's a really great thing to have, you know, to know that everyone's, like, coming together as one during these times.
Okay, for students, and then we also had the opportunity to adopt four bobcat families. There was two to three students assigned, like, grade levels per family, and they got, like, a wish list of what these people wanted, from like clothing, to games, and necessities. Shopping took place on Wednesday, this last Wednesday, and we also went to Walmart, and making sure that the gifts are delivered by winter break.
Okay, last Friday was another school dance, and it was after the boys' basketball game, which we won, scored forty-two to forty. This dance was sponsored by the Delegation for the Advancement of History, which is a club at the high school. Nearly one hundred students attended the dance, so it was a pretty good turnout. Since the last meeting, there's also been a chorus band and orchestra concert. So first was the MHS chorus, or MHS holiday concert, which was on December ninth, and it was MHS chorus and MHS band concert. And then, on December thirteenth, was Marshawn Orchestra Concert, and that was all districts, so it was grades five through twelve. And I talked to some kids that were in band and orchestra, and they said both the concerts, they think went really well. So, some upcoming events, this Wednesday at noon in auditorium is the Poetry Out Loud Contest. Nine students will be reciting two poems each, and the first place student will qualify for the state competition. So I think the nine girls in that picture will be the nine girls performing poems. So it's like attended some sort of conference to help them prepare. And then, this Friday, December twenty-first, is Ugly Sweater Day at MHS. This is sponsored by Student Senate, and Student Senate will also be handing out peony canes at lunch to spread the holiday spirit. And upcoming home sporting events, there's a bowling and wrestling meet this Tuesday, and then, there's basketball games on Thursday. Games start at four forty-five, and the boys' varsity starts at seven forty-five. Some special things about the basketball games this week is there is an ugly sweater theme for the, my, Thursday night games. And then, also, Carson Potter, who's a senior at the high school, has arranged a raffle for the kids who attend the boys' varsity game on Thursday. Any questions?
Busy last week. Thank you very much. We wish you'd worn your ugly sweaters tonight.
Hi, I'm Rachel Eakes. I'm excited to be here tonight to talk about this point of pride with you. We have an exciting time coming up for us, where we'll be able to acknowledge our students with a seal of bili literacy. And that's an award given by a school district to recognize students who have attained proficiency in two or more languages, one of those being English by high school graduation. So I'm gonna spend about ten minutes talking to you about that tonight. The reason why we're doing this is because Governor Kim Reynolds asked us to, and she signed a Senate file indicating that this seal of bili literacy should be afforded to our class of twenty nineteen students. And I wanna spend a little bit of time talking to you about the difference between being bilingual and being bili literate. So this seal will really be a point of pride for our students who are bili literate. Bili literate is different from being bilingual, and then, being bilingual just means that you can speak and listen in different languages and have that oral communication piece. If you're bili literate, you'll also have that literacy down, to be able to read and write, and speak and listen in that language as well. It's really important to be bili literate, and today, and moving forward, bilingualism and bili literacy gives individual students advantages in colleges, and on applications, and in obtaining scholarships, and entering into the workforce. Cities like Marshawn, and even smaller communities reap the benefits of a bili literate population. They grow their businesses in a global, international way, and expands to reach clients and profits. So what have we done since we've understood that we are able to honor our students with this work? In October, we confirmed to the state that we did intend to participate, beginning with this year's class. Right after that, we formed a bilingual seal of literacy, or, excuse me, bilingual, bili literacy seal committee that is composed of world language teachers, ELL teachers, MHS counselor, teacher leaders in the district, ELL coordinator, and administrators. This group of teachers and group of advisors reviewed the state guidance, which was connected here. We studied junior and senior data to really consider which students are we targeting, which students are we talking about here? We applied communication pathways that are immediate and then ongoing to update the variety of stakeholders we have. We drafted a student interest survey to really get an understanding of if our students would also be, see themselves as well positioned and taking advantage of this as well. And then, we had two teachers who took these stamp, which is the World Language Assessment, and they got to indicate their own proficiency levels along the way, and just to get a good flavor for what it is our kids will be doing when they take that test. And then, we also reached out to EMBARK, because we really need to have that lens of equity over our whole student population, so we know that some of our students may not be able to earn that bili literacy seal in the languages like Spanish or French. They may be able to earn that seal of bili literacy in our languages from Southeast Asia. So, EMBARK will begin a partnership with us to have more of an opportunity for our portfolio assessment, for a one-on-one interview, could be accomplished through Google Hangout. And then, they'll be able to help us recommend that the student does have that proficiency in that more remote language. And when I reached out to them, they also indicated that DuBois had contacted them, too. So we'll be working with them more to kind of make that process smarter, not harder, in all of our parts. Moving forward, besides the work that we have done in October and November, December work is already well underway. Mrs. Wyant held communication meetings with the juniors and the seniors, actually, all the classes, starting with the freshman class, to let them know that this was an opportunity for them, and to really plant that seed to be, being engaged in those world language courses, and then, to earn that seal of proficiency on the English part of it as well. And for the juniors and seniors, it was a different, a different conversation, letting them know that, guess what? You're already eligible on the English side. And for you, that means that you're able to participate in an interest survey where you can share with us if you have, if you have that preliminary aspect down of able to engage and listen and speak in that second language, and/or read short excerpts of text, and then, write short simple phrases. And then, at the end of that survey, it's very brief, the students just got a statement back that said your position to join in the second semester work sessions. Those are a series of very brief, brief work sessions, starting with a Q and A one that says, "I don't get this, what, why am I here?", to really talk to the kids about their opportunity to participate in this activity. The next session will just give them a sample stamp assessment, so they can take a look at the questions that are being asked of them, and their performance level required for that mid-intermediate proficiency in that second language. And then, they can follow that up with engaging in that stamp assessment, and taking that listening, that speaking, that reading, and that writing assessment, there's four brief components to that. The district will go ahead and support that at a cost of seventeen dollars and fifty cents per student. And then, that would be for the stamp test. We haven't yet, not yet worked out our, our agreement with EMBARK at this point in time. That'll be coming once we get that, that process worked out.
And those sessions that Rachel referenced would happen during the E and R time at the high school. So, the kids will be scheduled in two periods where they would meet with some staff members that are unidentified as people who could help in this process, because we want them to be committed and know that this is the right fit for them. We don't wanna pay for an exam that they're not in any position to do well on at this point, and nor do we wanna put them in a, a position where they feel like they've taken an assessment where they, you know, didn't do well. And so, I'm, I'm grateful that we have some time on our hands, so that we have January to get those things going, so that our kids can start taking these assessments in February for the first time.
I just looked at some preliminary data that's come in, the student interest survey has opened up, and we've had about fifty-six juniors and seniors respond thus far. Many are indicating that they, there is no question that actually says, "Yes, I wanna take this assessment." It's mostly about, are you in a course right now? Do you intend to be in a course next year related to world language? And then, do you perceive yourself as having that ability as that listener, that speaker, that reader, and that writer? So if the self-perception piece is there, if the student is at his or her peak of performance in engagement in the class opportunities for their course study on Spanish or French, whatever it is, then they're well positioned to take that assessment. If they are going to continue on for the next year, we wanna wait to have them take that assessment to when they're at their peak of in that. So, for our students who are juniors that are indicating to us that they'll wanna go on to next year, we'll hold off on that for them. We're also making sure that we keep in, keep in contact with our counselors. We wanna make for sure that MHS and Miller Middle School are well positioned to really encourage our students to continue on learning and studying that world language. We do know that we do have some English learners who may or may not have studied their first language, but the best course of practice for them will be to continue to study that through their heritage Spanish class or through a dual language learning opportunity as well. We just wanna reaffirm that we believe that all MHS students can earn this seal. And we can really celebrate, because the majority of our class of twenty nineteen is already well positioned to earn this seal. Many of them have already demonstrated that proficiency in English through those state exams, and they have, they have the skill sets that would allow them to demonstrate proficiency learned in another language, whether that's through our district dual language program, whether that's through a heritage Spanish class that we have at the high school, or that more traditional lens of learning that world language course in French and Spanish. And then, we also know that we have our, our students who have acquired that home native proficiency through their home learning environment. We wanna give an opportunity for all those lenses of students to recognize, to receive that seal of bili literacy. Mrs. Wyant intends to partner with her SPAC to recognize the seniors that are receiving this award at graduation, and also during senior night, they will receive that seal on their transcript and on their diploma. And it can be very valuable as they move forward into this world and be really a point of pride for Marshawn High Schools.
Questions?
I ask Jane, you're in Spanish four, aren't you?
Yeah.
And so is Emily, right?
Yeah.
Is this somebody like, do you know anything about this? Have you heard about it before?
Yeah, they talked about it, presumably, at the class meetings, I'll say that, but.
So, do you think that kids like you or Emily in Spanish four would have an opportunity to take this and pass it? Or is it really designed for somebody else?
I don't know, I, I don't know the answer to that. I don't feel very confident, like, listening or speaking just in Spanish, so.
Okay.
You don't have to talk in Spanish, you know, just. Sorry, people couldn't hear what you said.
Um, I'm not sure, 'cause I like to do fine writing stuff, but the speaking and listening, I don't know how proficient I am with, so I don't know what the test is like, but it depends.
So the, this, the way that we set this up is exactly designed for this, sort of a student in mind. The world language teachers that are part of the bilingual seal, bili literacy seal group really have indicated that they believe that the proficiency needed is really at the peak of Spanish three or French three. So, once students have finished that coursework, they believe that there's a merge of the data that's required, or the, the.
Skills.
The skills that's required in those courses are aligned to the proficiency demonstration on the stamp. That, that's called a mid-intermediate proficiency, mid-level intermediate.
So they're not, they, in order to get this seal, you're not actually testing, I mean, we're not testing, like, the level of what a bachelor's degree in Spanish would have in terms of fluency, like, on a scale of one to seven, these kids would fall in like a four, five, so, my guess is they're underestimating their abilities, to be honest. And they don't, you know, they know who they're testing, the stamp, and they don't expect the kids to be perfect spellers and all of that kind of stuff, but we'll learn a lot this first time around to see how our kids perform. And I just, I'm excited, 'cause I think it's one of those things where our diversity, again, is gonna poise us to be. Some, every district had local control to decide whether they wanted to do this or not. We were highly encouraged to by the Department of Ed, and of course, we said yes. But I think it'll be really interesting when all the dust settles at the end in June, and they collect data through the state reporting system to see how many kids we were able to, to offer this seal to, and compared to other districts, and, you know, maybe what interest this creates for a lot of our native speakers of Spanish to continue in Spanish in high school, whereas they might have not been doing that so much in the past.
Other questions?
America speaks first.
Thank you, Rachel.
We've got before you the proposed nineteen-twenty school calendar to take action on. We would recommend board approval. There have been no changes to the calendar since last meeting.
May I have a motion to approve twenty nineteen-twenty school year calendar as presented?
So move.
Second.
Harris Carter, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Marsha Carey, seventh to all.
I, I just noticed on the November calendar, it looks like the twenty-seventh is added on to what I think is the Thanksgiving break, but I don't believe that's labeled down below. And I didn't, I just wondered about that. I didn't, under Thanksgiving.
That was a comp day.
Oh, that's a comp day, okay.
Yeah, it's teacher comp day for conferences.
Yep. Thank you.
For Mrs. Frohwein's benefit, I will share that we have aired similar sentiments to Marshawn Community College about our desire to have those calendars aligned. I do believe it's in our students' best interest to be aligned with MCC. Was a little bit surprised, quite honestly, that they weren't aligned to Iowa State, but I also didn't realize that there's no concerted effort for Iowa State or Iowa to align either. I know that B Mac works hard to align with Iowa State, since there's so much crossover with staff and parents working there and that sort of thing, but we'll keep pushing for that.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Parker?
I don't want to take my photo, so you can grab my camera. Okay, we've come to you with the communications marketing plan that has been several months in the making. I believe it's one of the. I believe that's one of the superintendent's goals that the board has set. So we have been doing lots of work the past few years to kind of promote the district. And now we kind of are going to narrow our focus and add more of a planning aspect rather than kind of more just kind of getting a lot of information out there. I was joking about that, but.
I was going to warn you on that now, but you'd be surprised.
Okay, so we did survey parents, did a communication survey of parents in June, when school let out, and we had three hundred and twenty responses to that. And also Vision Marsh Town worked with a marketing company in the Des Moines area called Measured Intentions and did a community marketing survey. So we've used some information that they, they have provided as well as the parent survey that we did to our own parents, our school parents in June. So that was kind of some of the research we did leading into this plan. And that leads us to the three main goals, create better two-way communication with parents in the community. Improve the perception of the district overall and provide better communication with our diverse community. As we work in the goal, I won't go through each one of these, but I'll kind of just summarize them for you. The days of parents reading lengthy, lengthy notes from us is probably gone. We need to provide them quick information where they're at. So we're trying to do, you know, you know, we see people scrolling on their phone. We try to provide quick blurbs of information, whether that's updates on schedules, whether that's profiling our staff, our students. We, that's kind of why we have to be kind of a little more, show a little more intent on being quick and delivering that information is easier on the parents. So, so that's kind of going through a few of those, I'm still, still going a little bit, Joshua. And there's a few goals as far as growing our social media. We have, we have, that's why we kind of want to utilize Facebook Live or utilize some, since Facebook has grown in our district, we want to continue to see that grow. Because that helps spread our good, good news, mostly good news that we have on Facebook, you know, there's other things that pop up as well. But, and then Twitter and Dr. Stevenson started an Instagram page, we want to continue with that as well. And online calendars was requested by the parent communication survey to get a little more robust online calendars, so. And we can, we continue a weekly parent email newsletter that we started. It used to be about every other week and now we've kind of done mostly weekly now to try to keep, keep that going as well, so. And goal two would be improve the reception of the district overall. One of the results of that measuring intention survey was to give a good news at Marsh Town email. So people just kind of have a way to share good news about students or staff. So we started that and we still continue to get that out there. Just, just different ways to kind of spread the good news. We want to continue to promote our staff, which is, we have an excellent staff here, we just want to continue to show that we do. Whether that's through more profiles on their, on the staff directory on our website or something over here. We're saying we love our people as far as, with one of our teachers. So we're going to continue to do that and just need to have, have more ways to promote our staff. Because we have very experienced staff and a very knowledgeable staff that we can, we can take pride in, so. And speaking of pride, we have Bobcat Pride marketing efforts. You might have seen even more alumni profiles than we have now, so we're trying to continue to do that. That was one of the, the points from the marketing company was to continue to show, to celebrate the success story. So if you want to go ahead, go ahead. Excellent, so. And then also we got to do more to promote what our district offers that others don't, such as dual credit, Project Lead the Way, STEM. We do that a little bit, but as far as we can, we can always do more to, to continue that. Because we have lots of offerings that districts in the area don't have, so. And the third goal is find better communication with our diverse community. We're continuing to try to get more and more stuff translated to Spanish and other languages and continue that work. And also kind of piggybacking on the Proud to Be Diverse video where we featured dozens of students that were pictured there. That we're continuing to promote diverse, diversity in our district and how everybody benefits from that, so. I went pretty quick, I knew our meeting was, we had a long agenda, so I'm sure you guys have any questions for me?
There's some good stuff here. Thank you for presenting to us. To me, the biggest need for a better marketing plan in the district is to try and stem the tide of open enrollment. That's the, and you didn't mention that once in your plan. It ought to be a measurement of the success of the plan. And I think you ought to target your mess, these messages are all good messages. You ought to target it to parents of kids that are pre-kindergarten and find ways to communicate with that group of people, more than any other group of people at all. It ought to be like, that'd be like my number one focus if I was doing this marketing plan, it'd be bullet one on page one.
Yeah, that has been, whether we're narrowing that focus we have it, that has been, my, my peers in other school districts are in the same boat. When they're, when they're meeting, they're trying to figure out ways to reach that, that, those kind of parents, so, yeah.
Kids, sporting events, soccer, basketball, NFL football, the Y, that's the place to go.
I was just going to say, Andrew, that I really liked the goal two area where you show what we have that other districts don't surrounding us. Because I think that's really hard for parents to know unless they see it. So, because if you're not in the district, you don't know what you're missing.
Yeah, and that's what, when conversations that I've had with Aaron a lot is that we need to get more of that on the website. We got to, so they're, they're seeing that in one place. We have lots of information on the website, we just need to make that more accessible for parents who are doing research on our school district. So that's something that we're working on, continuing to work on.
Yeah, and then I really liked the Marsh Town School Foundation portion, because I think that's also another really strong support system of the district. That can be developed at least.
That's in the plans as well to have a page on the website and people can donate directly. And, yeah, other, other districts have that page and that's a plan, so.
I've received a lot of positive comments about the billboards.
Oh, you did? Okay. Yeah, we, we tried that and, you know, that's something we might look into in the future, but, yeah.
Takes a chunk of the budget, I know.
Yeah.
They weren't well received.
Questions, comments? May I have a motion to approve the communication marketing plan as presented?
So move.
Second.
Harris Carter, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven to zero. Senator Edler, Representative Fisher, come join us at the speaker's table.
Welcome.
That's a pretty close timing there, just right on target.
Well, as I, as we've attempted to do each of the last couple of years, we just really enjoy having the two of you, as well as Representative Smith, come in. And talk a little bit about the, what your forecast or vision is for the upcoming legislative session. Us to share a little bit against about our priorities as well. So, hoping it up for your insights.
Go ahead. Okay, well, I guess to start out, probably the, the number one thing that's on the talking agenda is going to be the SAFE extension. What's that going to look like? What guidance rails are going to be placed on that to get that done? There's obviously a varying range of what people want to see on that. I've been pretty open in advocating, trying to keep as much at the local level as far as decision-making on that. But I also can't agree with some of my fellow legislators who thinks there needs to be some guidance. So, I'm looking at a possible reverse referendum on large items. That may be something that, that pops up in the near future for discussion. Next up, something that kind of by default, I've got very heavily involved in is the mental health services and children's mental health. The construction of the system essentially. We operated off of collaboratives and pilot projects and really a piecemeal system of children's mental health. And we decided it's a priority to try and bring that into a system and a coordinated effort with funds and services. So, I see that as being a very key priority that the schools will continue to play a, a very important role in. Along with AEA, DHS, judicial system, everything. Every piece that's already existing will continue to be a very important piece in that puzzle. Also, as I've stated in the past, one of our big priorities was to try and get the equity, the cost per pupil and the transportation. And we are looking for a permanent source of funding for transportation equity. So, as we keep moving forward on that, I've always wanted to get that money back to the student for their education rather than seeing it go up and be something else. The other thing we discussed, and I believe we passed out of the Senate, some praxis reforms, trying to make that a little more easily. The requirements of it to ease it, so there was more time for a teacher to take the test. And really, try and make that a little more uniform and, and more flexible. So we can get more teachers back in quickly to help out on the teacher shortage. And especially incentivize for rural teachers, we're still struggling there also. Those are probably some of the key priorities, obviously getting the SSA set quickly, fiduciarily, responsibly. And making sure you know what you have to work with.
Make our life easier.
Yes, yeah.
Echo what Senator, or Senator, about the SSA, I think we need to get it done early. One of the risks in that is we may not know exactly what our numbers are early on, because we have a March revenue estimating conference. So that, that could be our, our guiding mark for the budget. So, you know, you have to play those two things against each other. But I think we will be trying to, I'll certainly be supporting giving it center. Like, you can always come back and increase it if the numbers are there. The, regarding the SAFE fund, I've supported that, I voted for it last session. I do think we need some guardrails, I don't think it affects anything here at Marsh Town. There've been some complaints about using the money for a large sports stadium and that sort of thing. It kind of brought some people the wrong way, so we might put some guardrails on that kind of stuff, like with the shortish or whatever and whatnot. But I certainly hope we get that passed this year. I understand the need for the, the SAFE fund for our schools, it's a big part of what you, you know, what you count on, so. Supplemental state aid, again, you know, that presented pretty bad, we have no idea. Budget's looking a little better this year. In the last couple of years, we were concerned about coming up short at the end of the year, so we did some new year budget cuts. We helped K through twelve schools harmless. Hoping we can, you know, our budget this year looks a little bit better. We had a little bit of a surplus at the end of last year, which is kind of a surprise. It looks like we might have a little bit more at the end of the current fiscal year. So, hopefully we can do a little better than we have, you know, the past couple of years. But it remains to be seen what exactly that number is going to be. Because we're going to be trying to hold back on any surplus funds. We do have to make sure that we have a cushion, so we don't have to go through those gyrations in January if the revenue forecast doesn't materialize, you know, on the actual. Let's see, what else? Transportation funding, yeah, we passed the transportation funding last year. I was a little uncomfortable with the way we did it last year. I believe there's some changes if we're going to do something like that. Again, this year was a wondering thing, but we'll see where that goes. I know it's going to be discussed, so.
The item that you can see at the top of our board list is unfunded or underfunded mandates. We don't need any of those.
Certainly try to do what we can to minimize or eliminate those. But then again, there are some things that are fundamental to an education too. So, certainly bring those forwards if they're specific items. One of the things I've got heartburn with is there's, it's in state law that you can't have a child on a bus more than a certain number of minutes. And why is the state trying to dictate that? I think the school board should decide what's best for their district and the funds they have and whatnot. There's probably other things like that that maybe we could send back to the, the local district instead of the state mandating.
I was always been a local-run institution, so to speak, so it would be nice for that to be the case.
I can speak a little bit more on that piece too. So what went on last year is we were trying to expand the, what was the K through eight to the seventy-five minute limit from the sixty minute? Which basically just matched what the high school or upper level grades were once at the seventy-five minute. And I think there was a lot of confusion thinking that we were just extending the entire bus route to seventy-five minutes. Many people didn't understand that was just aligning it with what was already there for the high school students. And actually, just by that little piece that gave school boards the tool to possibly take out a bus route or two. Because of that fifteen-minute increment, but it was their decision, not ours. We just allowed them to make that decision. So I think there was some misunderstanding on what was really going on with that bill, so.
Kind of going back to the topic we brought up about unfunded mandates. There was one for sure and possibly two or three, or the potential for two or three in the last legislature. The one for sure was a financial literacy requirement. And the biggest problem with that was the expediency for which we have to implement that. School districts, in fact, I say some are still not quite aware of the situation. But, you know, this year's juniors are the first ones that are going to be held accountable and make sure that, that they have that credit. And so we're having to repurpose existing curriculum in order to implement that. Repurpose current teachers in order to implement that. Figure out alternative ways for students to get that. And the specificity of the legislation in terms of the twenty-some topics that have to be covered is somewhat problematic. In terms of, there's nothing ready-made, you know, curricular-wise that can accomplish that. So, we're in the process of developing a blended learning opportunity for students that's not hundred percent reliant on direct instruction of a teacher. But partially that way in the short term. But we're also figuring out what we're going to cut in curriculum at the freshman sophomore level in order to accommodate face-to-face opportunity for incoming ninth graders next year. So, from what I understand, I think there's going to be an effort to hopefully get some flexibility or leniency on this year's juniors, sophomores and freshmen in terms of what's going to be needed there. But to date, we haven't even really received guidance from the Department of Ed, other than just do what's in the law. And so, we don't know, for example, if a student took as an elective course or let's say as a required course. Because the dist, the district might have already had a requirement of financial literacy, but it only covered sixty percent of what's in the law. Can we grandfather those students and not make them retake financial literacy in order to meet the letter of the law? So there's some guidance of that nature. And it's, we absolutely need it. I think it's a good expectation. It's just the way that it came about's making it logistically challenging. Because our kids register here in January, February for next year. So you have to, we can't wait for the legislature to change it or hope that the legislature is going to change it in order to plan for the coming year. The future-ready effort and initiative that the governor has really promoted. I think that too is absolutely spot on. But with low supplement, state supplemental aid and, you know, very few resources in order to add something which at a bare minimum is going to need some help and support in terms of monitoring and helping kids facilitate, for example, participating in work-based learning experiences and that sort of thing. Very difficult to do in an exemplary way anyway without additional. do in an exemplary way anyway without additional funding there. And the other big push which ties in with future ready a little bit is, you know, the computer science instruction, and there have been some state grants to help teachers become certified through some different state institutions, but again, you know, to build new curriculum and to implement anywhere beyond what you're already doing, you know, it's either going to have to take the place of something or take additional funding, so they're all very important things, there's no question about that, but it's just difficult to do with our current state of affairs with low state supplemental aid and no designated funds to help jumpstart it, you know, to get it off the ground and that sort of thing. And I know Senator Adler, you were very helpful in trying to learn and bring to the attention of others the importance of increased funding for local community colleges, especially as it relates to dual credit in the high school, because that's in many cases the answer for us in terms of how to give kids more enriched experiences, especially in those CTE areas and those work-ready areas, but with them being pinched on funding, that winds up turning around and pinching us in terms of, I know some districts are already starting to limit the amount of dual credit and things like that because of the cost, and I think it's been sometimes since they've received an increase of helping offset those costs for high school students.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you very much for coming.
Thanks for having us. As always, if you have any questions, feel free to give me a call, and I'm going to talk to me throughout the session, and I appreciate the input, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the district participates in a couple of different consortiums for some special ed services, one of them is River Hills, and so consortiums have the opportunity to go before the SBRC and get approval to have administrative services for special ed, apply to special ed, which we typically can't do, so this is just asking the board's permission to take that, ask for that three thousand twenty dollars and seventy-one cents, which is the district's estimated portion of those administrative services for the year, and apply that to special ed.
Questions for Pollard? May I have a motion to approve the application to the School Budget Review Committee in the amount of three thousand fifty-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents for special education administrative costs associated with River Hills Consortium Program for the 2019-20 school year?
Second?
Fletcher Miller, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries, seven to.
Rachel did such a great job, I didn't have to say, is this on?
I think when you put it back in, you put it in upside down, and so now it's not on. Now it is.
Now it is, okay. Rachel did such a great job that I didn't say much before, and I'm not going to say much now either, so a couple of weeks ago, I shared with you the detailed budget for the AT-Risk application for next school year, and our next step is to ask for a board approval tonight for the amount, it's kind of small to read there, but for the amount listed, and then Pollard and I will upload the board minutes from tonight, and our application will be complete.
Questions?
So this number's a little different than what we talked about before, right?
It is, yes. There were two upon further review, I wanted to make sure that we didn't miss anything when we went through the actual line item budget. There had been a reading interventionist at Lenihan that was funded out of AT-Risk my first year here, and then last year, we received the STEM Best Grant for MLA and MHS, and the person that was working there part-time went to do that grant work full-time with MLA and MHS, which left an opening that we covered through a substitute last semester, last school year, and then that position has gone unfilled this year, so that was why it wasn't on our list of expenditures of this year's budget, so that was an oversight, and we budgeted in an approximated cost of a teacher's salary with benefits based on our current AT-Risk teachers, I, we feel pretty comfortable about that estimate. And then the other thing was at the most recent AT-Risk committee meeting, there had been a pretty vocal group who wanted more mental health support, and you've heard that numerous times here, for our kids getting services locally, and so Matt had talked to center associates about increasing our contract from twenty thousand to thirty thousand dollars, so it's a small increase of ten thousand, but it'll provide, give us an opportunity to serve about thirty percent more students than we're doing right now, and there's quite a weight for kids in between services that are in, that, that are getting served by center associates, and or if you're a new kid, there's an even bigger weight to get in as a new patient or new client, I suppose. So yes, those are the additional costs.
Other questions? May I have a motion to approve the AT-Risk budget for the 2019-20 school year as presented? Carter Fletcher, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, the same. Motion carries, seven to.
Thank you.
Anell and?
Dan.
Dan, please join us.
While they're coming, I was just going to say, it's so impressive to see the, this is filler entertainment for you guys, but to see the students, the presentations they bring up here, like, I just am so impressed with the quality and the commitment they have that they put in as our student, school board reps, like, they're teenagers, and as a mother of two, I know they don't usually do a lot of things above and beyond what they have to, but, and so I just, I just am so impressed, and one of these days, I know they're going to talk about curriculum and their presentations, that's so exciting, because most of the time, they talk about, you know, the events and the fun, cool things that happen at the high school, nobody talks about the great books they're reading, or things they're learning in science.
So do you keep pushing to include those?
Yeah, finals are coming up.
I think we had a good promo for French, a few weeks, there were a few meetings good.
That's true, they did talk about their extensions in French.
So here we are on chapter six.
It was kind of timely to have Anell's presentation earlier, really kind of feeds into this a little bit as far as the progress monitoring.
Well, she knew that, so that's why she did it, right?
Yes, it was planned. She's read the whole book already.
Yeah.
Time to.
Things that stuck out. I thought one of the things that was quite interesting in terms of making true determinations of mastery of content was that whole concept of unidimensionality, I think it was, or it talked about, you know, if you have multiple things being assessed, you know, students can perform well on some things and not so well on other things, and do relatively well on the assessment, but you have to be lacking significantly on maybe some important portions of that, so I thought that was kind of interesting.
Yeah, it was nice to hear, I mean, the, that was probably the thing I took away from this, is the constant assessment and assessment and assessing the right things, so it was, actually your presentation was the first time I saw that practice, I guess, or I knew that I was seeing practice, it was probably the first time I seen a good presentation.
So in the book, it sounds very specific and detailed, and how, in theory, how realistic is aligning all these individual assessments and getting everybody on the same page and really actually doing that?
We just spent some time Monday, the seventeenth, in professional learning, and you've all been asking about, like, the math, elementary math curriculum and how we know if it's making a difference yet or not, and we can look at those big summative assessments we take once a year, but those don't always move much, and like this, like Darren was saying, sometimes kids can be doing really well in some parts of math, but not in others, and that it's just one global test, and so what the teachers did Monday was they took the chapters, it depended on the grade for K six, but most of them was chapters three, four, and five, that they've studied in math already this year, and then the essential standards that the kids had been assessed on. And, the microphone's dead. Okay, am I back? So they took the chapter three, four, and five assessments, depending on whatever grade level that the kids have been taking since October, and then they went into a master spreadsheet and were able to do a lot of this kind of detailed work about what the essential standards were, so maybe, we have six elementary spreadsheets going on, and then the teachers had time to go in and upload, like, I just looked at Woodbury's this morning, like, Mrs. Hillby in kindergarten, she would put in twenty out of twenty of her kids, twenty-five of her kids were proficient on OA three, like, operations and algebraic thinking three, so we can get down to that level of detail, and that's kind of the work we're asking teachers to do now, because if you want to maximize intervention time, you have to know where they're falling out, like, where the learning's breaking apart, but it does get a lot more complicated at the secondary level when they've got a hundred and twenty-five kids, so maybe I'll let Dan talk about how that's looking.
As I, as I studied through this chapter, just some of the things that came to my attention was just having that initially, that viable curriculum, starting there, and you know, the past few years, we have incorporated new curriculum into our, into our student learning, and believe that we are absolutely on the right page regarding the science and coming up, the history, but what really has, has kind of shaped our school the past few years is moving from the curriculum, you know, and the common units, and then the common assessments, just keep, we're continuing to build on that, and now, you know, chapter five, or chapter six that we're in is really an important piece for Marshalltown High School, because oftentimes, you know, we still have, still have teachers who are using their assessments as a final, as a final go-to, instead of using it as a learning tool, and so you've heard about the enrichment, or the enrichment times that we have scheduled into our day, Tuesday through, Tuesday through Friday, we have enrichment time, where students can actually sign up for their enrichment time, teachers also, when they've determined that a student needs a little bit of extra support, help, you know, based on the assessments up there that are happening in the classroom, they are assigning these students to the enrichment time, so really feel like we're, we're on the right track, and we're doing some things that will enable students to gain that needed support, you know, based on how they, how they did on some of these formative assessments.
I really feel the district is leading us in the right direction with their PLC process, and in the area of math, we have a great group of district level with our instructional coaches, and Erica and Dr. Stevenson, as far as aligning our, realigning our math assessments, and then in the, in the process of taking teachers to find common formative assessments throughout as checkpoints, and not just waiting for that summative piece, so we can know how we can support the kids throughout the learning, instead of having a pre and a poster. The one piece that I took away to, or from this chapter was, it really aligned for what I presented tonight, or what Julie and I presented tonight, and this is one area we really need to continue to develop in our literacy department, whereas it's not as clear-cut and clean as it might be on the math side, so we are looking at different ways of assessing the students, continuously as reassessing the students, so we have them in the right groups, and some of the, they mentioned three different types of assessments, and we use all these different types of assessments throughout our literacy component in order to be able to regroup our kids for a meeting, but that's still an area that, that we have to develop, because as, as we group our students for our NTSS block, each, each group had its own progress monitoring, it wasn't like a blanket, some summative or a blanket common formative assessment that we were using for like all fifteen groups in kindergarten, or all nine groups in first grade, each individual teacher had to identify what exactly they were working on, so it was that multi-dimensional, it wasn't, it's not multi-dimensional, we're looking at one dimensional aspect, and then seeing the growth to see then how we can move forward with that, with those pieces, but it's continuous assessment of the kids, and having the student, having the teachers use that piece to really impact their instruction and change their teaching in order to impact the student learning, is this big key that we are trying to really change that mind shift in our teachers, so.
It's awesome, it's great working with high school students, because when they can get to a point where they can just actually verbalize, can I, can I tell you what I know? You know, when they're able to do that, and then use that as a way of monitoring and assessing, and as a, sometimes a starting point, or sometimes it's a wow, you really have picked up a lot of things in this particular unit, here's how you will be assessed, so it's, it's, there are endless possibilities, and we're talking about monitoring students in different ways than what we have traditionally done, and I think we are absolutely on, on track to begin experiencing and moving towards some of these creative ways of assessing students.
I think that quote they had at the end about teach, test, and hope for the best, and you just move on, was kind of fitting, especially with the information coming up from the state sometime this week about our ESA designations, because as much as our school rank, achievement levels and reports are based on a summative test, at least to the credit of ESA, growth is built in at almost triple the weighting as proficiency, so it's not saying that we don't want you to be proficient when you take the summative test, but it's also recognizing that not everybody's going to get there at the exact same moment in their life, and we're going to give credit where credit is due, so if you grew a whole year, maybe you weren't proficient on the fourth grade math test, but you were, you know, in third grade, you were at a year, first grade, mid-year first grade, and you grew to almost a third grade level, you're still not at fourth grade, but you made more growth than we thought you could make, or that most kids make in one year, and it's giving credit and some recognition to growth that our kids make, which is, you know, kind of ties back to what Anell presented in this chapter, which is, you're supposed to be doing all this assessing because you want to see what kids are learning, you know, versus so much kind of focus on what I'm teaching, but, because you can teach and teach and teach, but if kids aren't learning it, then, you know, we haven't hit the nail on the head quite yet, so stay tuned for the growth, I suppose, that's going to come up.
I think that the district is faced, right now, as I'm reading this book, with one of the good news, bad news sort of thing. The bad news, well, I guess it's good news, bad news, good news. The good news is that about fifteen years ago, the district signed a group of principals to Dick Stiggin's Institute of the district signed a group of principals to Dick Stiggins Institute in Portland, Oregon for the student-involved classroom assessment. And that's exactly what Anell's been talking about in the unobtrusive assessments, student-generated assessments. So we had that information fifteen years ago. For some reason, it fell apart, lost, whatever. The good news is that it's coming back. But it's unfortunate that it didn't stick the first time through because we started this process fifteen years ago. I was one of those principals who went to Portland, Oregon. And the information from Dick Stiggins on student-involved classroom assessment was some of the brightest work that was coming out at that time. And so now we've got other people who are saying, well, now you should be doing this. Well, it was originally Dick Stiggins' work. So it's a good news, bad news, good news, I guess, sort of thing. Any other comments about the chapter, where we are, where we're going? Chapter seven for January. Thank you to the principals and Lisa.
Thank you.
They have seats warm, so you can pick one.
Thank you for allowing me some time to come back requesting permission to move forward with purchase of small vehicles in your packets or the prices we got, our bids we got, and then our recommendation for you. Ross asked me to double-check with the state on vehicles of overnight passenger. And I did not, I got this back from Max Christensen today. It is two eight one dash four four point five. The manufacturer rate capacity of this vehicle, which shall be determined only by the original equipment manufacturer, on the date of manufacturing, shall not exceed nine persons, including the driver. So that's why we can't do the ten or twelve passenger. But Ross asked me to make sure of that, and I asked for the, that from Max, and he gave that to us. There were good deals. We liked them, but we can't use them. We could purchase them, but they would only be used by staff, no students could ever use them. So that wouldn't be a wise purchase for the district.
So that, that costs us thirteen thousand dollars.
Yes.
We, we're not, they don't trust us enough to manage of putting something on there that says capacity nine people, right?
Right.
Even though the manufacturer says you can seat ten.
Right.
Can you take a seat out?
Yeah, I asked, I asked that same question. I was told, no. It says what the, what the manufacturer on the date it's built.
So that's a thirteen thousand dollar impact to us.
Yep.
Ridiculous. But I very much appreciate you checking into it, so thank you.
Yep. I do, I do have that.
Nope, you're good. Thank you.
I appreciate you taking with three local vendors too. Good job.
Thank you.
Questions for Rex?
I guess the other thing, Rex, is I appreciate the recap of the fleet and what you've provided us by year, by mileage, so that we at least have a feel for what's possibly coming down the road. That's, that's the first time in three years
Ever.
that I've been here that we've seen anything like that, so, so thank you.
It was, it was my question when I first got here, what vehicles am I supposed to oversee? And then Paulette wanted, and Dr. Shitty asked for the completely including buildings and grounds. So we knew where we're in, tried to do some planning every year versus all of a sudden we're at a problem.
Yeah.
So it's combined effort and I appreciate everybody's input. And it's a neat document to have where we can be looking at and keep you updated and moving forward.
So were there maintenance records or anything that says in the last year, X number of miles were put on each vehicle? Or is that something you just have to build?
We got the mileage per year, because we have to have that for our transportation report. Maintenance records, when they switched from whatever program they had prior to Infinite Campus, those records were being put in that software. That software got locked up when the district decided to switch.
Okay.
And things didn't get printed off and filed.
Okay.
So I'm, we're rebuilding our, our information.
Thanks.
So at least you'll know what you're using and what.
Yep.
What do you think?
Oh, yeah. We're, we're on top of that now.
Other questions? I have a motion to approve a purchase recommendation for five-passenger, sub-passenger, or nine-passenger small vehicles totaling ninety-eight thousand one hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
So.
Harris Fernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same.
Thank you so much. Greatly appreciate it.
Thanks.
Good evening.
That's why you wanted to do better.
Yes, yes. Tonight I'd like to talk a little bit about what some of the technology department's plans are for next year's E-Rate funding cycle, where we are, and make a request to publish an RFP for some hardware. So just a, a quick recap, E-Rate is basically to provide all Americans have, to have access to communications and services. And what it is, it's established by the Universal Service Fund. It provides discounts to schools to obtain affordable telecommunications. Filing E-Rate typically happens in three parts. First, you file a four seventy, that's publishing an RFP for services. A four seventy-one, which is where you request the funding. And then a four eighty-six is where the funding commitment for those services are committed to the school district. So the next upcoming E-Rate funding year, year, we have our category one services. And this year, we're down to leased fiber and internet. So our leased fiber, we have a ten-year contract, which is due to expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. And what that is, it basically connects all of our buildings together through fiber optic circuits. And in order for us to lease that, the annual cost is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Through E-Rate, we've historically received eight percent back on that rate. So it comes out to be about twenty-four thousand dollars a year. Last year, we switched our internet service provider to MediaCom. We signed a three-year contract with them for five gigabits per second. And the annual cost of that is down to sixty thousand dollars with, with our discount rate being approximately twelve thousand dollars. So those are our category one services. We do not have to file a four seventy for those services because we are in contract with those vendors. So that would be a, a four seventy-one that will get filed with USAC. The new stuff, the new hardware that I'm requesting the board approve tonight is for twenty-seven power over ethernet switches, which are going to average hopefully around seventeen hundred dollars apiece for an estimated total of forty-six thousand dollars. And what those are, they provide power over ethernet, our new phone system. When you plug in a phone to the wall jack, that can also provide power to that phone to keep, to keep it going. So in some areas, we do need some POE switches. We've been using power over ethernet power injectors, which are working. But these new switches will also provide qualitative service capabilities, meaning we can prioritize different kinds of traffic going over those switches. We can provide a priority to voice, make sure that goes through when somebody's streaming. YouTube videos might get to a little less priority. Well, I'm also hoping to publish an RFP for some core switches at the high school in Miller for a total cost of forty-four thousand dollars. And what those core switches do is they kind of aggregate all the data from the edge switches to be sent off either to our central core at the high school or off to the internet. Some of those switches, they're starting to show their age. They were purchased in January of twenty thirteen. One way you can kind of gauge how well a switch is handling the capacity on the system is the level of processor consumption on those switches. And we're hitting about seventy percent usually when, in my experience, it's been when you hit around the eighty percent, you might start seeing some packet loss in those systems. So these replacements would be needed for any kind of future growth. So the total estimated cost of this whole project is hopefully somewhere in the ninety thousand dollar range. But after E-Rate funding, it would hopefully be reduced down to eighteen thousand dollars.
Questions?
Do you always purchase versus lease? Is leasing an option even?
It, it is an option on switches, but the length and duration that we kind of keep switches for, keeping them for six to seven years, purchasing is typically the cheaper option than leasing.
Is that the right practice to keep them for six or seven years?
Um, the switches can have a longer life cycle than say a desktop computer or something like that. It's back to the processor on that switch. How long is it able to keep up with that processing power? And we've been doing, in my opinion, pretty good on that so far, so.
So is there any resale value when you sell these old switches?
There is, yeah. And we've been trying to leverage public surplus. Hopefully at one of the future board meetings, we'll be going back with our old phone system to put it on there. And we did recently just complete the sale of all of our Chromebooks, which I'll be providing an update on what the total amount of that was, but.
Thanks.
Do you buy maintenance contracts with these switches like Cisco SmartNet?
So yeah, Cisco SmartNet would be on the core switches. The twenty-seven power over ethernet switches will most likely not be Cisco just due to the pricing of SmartNet that could exponentiate the costs.
Can, will E-Rate help pay for SmartNet?
Not under a normal circumstance, no, not under that type of licensing. So the HP switches is currently what we have on our edge switching now. And we would most likely remain with an HP vendor for the edge switches.
Other questions, comments? I have a motion to approve a request to publish an RFP in conjunction with the E-Rate for switches and installation services as presented.
Same.
Miller Fletcher, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion, Rex.
Do you care if Randy and I take the hot seat?
Take the hot seat.
So as everyone knows, last Thursday, I think it was, Wednesday or Thursday, I don't know, Wednesday, state auditor's office released their investigative report claiming publicly, which affirmed essentially what our internal investigation had found. And so I've asked Paulette and Randy to just talk a little bit about some of those things that we immediately hand over in continuous improvement process or putting in place to best ensure that we don't have some more issues going forward.
I think continuous improvement is the key phrase there. We've spent a lot of time over the last six months evaluating how we can implement some oversight procedures to mitigate the chances of this loss ever happening again. Randy and I will feel that these evaluations should be ongoing and look at this, continue to look at this process year-round. And then when our auditors are here to do our annual financial statement audit, we can ask them for recommendations too, to help us improve. So that being said, you know, we are, we are always continually looking for, for ways to, to improve our processes. In the report, I'm not going to go with the whole report, but at the back of the report, we're on page sixteen, the auditors had some recommended control procedures for our district. And I can't sum it up any easier than they did. So an important aspect of internal control is to establish procedures which provide accountability for assets susceptible to loss from errors and irregularities. These procedures provide the actions of one individual will act as a check on those of another and provide a level of assurance errors or irregular, irregularities will be identified within a reasonable time during the course of normal operations. Our two essential job functions of the person that is in a, the payroll specialist position within our district are to balance and process payroll on a monthly basis and to reconcile, prepare, and process payroll taxes in an accurate and timely manner. Again, we want to reiterate how important oversight is. And so it is our goal to make sure that everything in that whole entire payroll cycle has oversight. There is not a part of that payroll cycle right now that isn't being reviewed by at least one person and sometimes two. We have a very long list of things that we are, have implemented, are working on implementing, or want to implement. But the key points, I think, to make are that data entry is being reviewed by everyone, not, not by everyone, but by a lot of people. It's all being reviewed.
Yes, that water, that everything in the payroll office or everything that comes out of payroll comes through one or both of us. And one or both of us is signing off and approving everything.
So is there a paper trail to that now, Randy, then? You're checking it, somebody's initial in it, signing off on it?
Yes, so we have a payroll checklist as well as a liability checklist in place. So Tammy, our payroll specialist, when she goes through and does all the data entry and everything, she's signing off and dating when, when she's doing it. And then, then likewise, the, there's the approval column where we're doing the same. We're signing off and dating that, that we have, we have checked everything. I know for me personally, the, all the data entry reports do come across my desk. And I, I usually spend a few days out of the month going through all those.
One of the other immediate changes that we implemented was creating a monthly payroll change file so that after we had processed through payroll, we always go back through that file and double-check that each of those changes that occurred actually were input correctly and are showing up calculating correctly and such. The other thing that we feel is helpful to do is we're processing a little bit earlier in the month so that we have an opportunity to send out direct deposit pay stubs to individuals before we've actually processed. This gives those employees an opportunity to review their upcoming pay stub, you know, payroll amount and reach out to us if there are things that haven't been added that should be. We can, if there's things on there that shouldn't be, they can call and let us know prior to actually processing. And then this will cut down on the number of extra payrolls that are being processed, corrections, things like that, because we were processing several extra payrolls each month. So hopefully that will be helpful to everyone involved too. One of the big things, as Randy mentioned, that we're doing is actually reconciling the payroll. So we have a process in place where after we have a payroll register, we go through and we actually do some recalculations of different social security, Medicare, IFRS, things like that. We actually look and see, does this make sense? Is this calculating correctly? We do spot checks. We can't obviously recheck nine hundred and some employees each month. So we do some spot testing to make sure that things are calculating correctly for different employees.
So are these actions, you're taking actions, specific actions because of a recommendation from the state? Or are they because of a best practice that you've done in the past? Or is it just basic, good accounting practice?
All the above. I would say.
Which is good, that's a great answer.
No, yeah, no, I would lean more towards best practices and our previous experiences at our prior districts. I think Paulette and I both recognize right away some of the irregularities and things that should be done better.
Yeah, we both have payroll experience in the past. And so this, this reconciliation process that we're using right now is something that I used in a previous district. And that's not to say that we won't improve this or make it better. But we're, as, as we say a lot, we're building the plane as we're flying it. And we're also kind of continually asking ourselves, what can go wrong in this process? What isn't working about this process? What are some things that might trip us up here? So one of the things that we're kind of, we're doing differently is we send a direct deposit file to the bank each month for over two million dollars. In the past, one person had the ability to send that file right from payroll. So we're going to change that a little bit so that the person that is actually processing payroll cannot alter that file before it gets to the bank in any way, shape, or form. So we're going to completely segregate the function of calculating that file, sending that file, and then somebody else does the bank reconciliation. So there's no opportunity there for somebody to go into a direct deposit file and change bank account numbers or anything like that. I'm not saying that's what was happening, but we, we are continually looking at, okay, what can go wrong in this process? What can we continue to try to mitigate?
Segregation, segregation where possible, essentially.
Some of the other things that we've implemented immediately, six months ago, was having multiple contacts for different agencies such as IFRS, the IRS. IFRS, actually, we have the ability to go in and put in as many contacts as we need. So right now we have three contacts in there. If something goes, if something goes unnoticed by one person, it should be noticed by another person. We also have it set up with the IRS that any confirmations of our electronic tax payment, tax deposits, come to me. And then we also have somebody separate reconciling the bank statements. The other thing that we're going to start doing that we're still kind of trying to develop a system is each month we're going to push out payroll reports to the department heads so that they have an opportunity to monitor not only their own budgets compared to, to actual, but then they can address issues such as excessive overtime. Or, you know, why did we have such a huge payroll this month compared to last month? We're doing a lot of analytical review each month before we actually send the file to the bank, just looking at stuff and saying, does this make sense? Why did we have two million dollars in a direct deposit file last month? And now all of a sudden, we only have one point eight, you know? Just analytical review that doesn't take a whole long time, but does it make sense?
Can you talk a little bit about the, the leave time that was used in excess of authorized? There was twelve thousand?
Yeah, so this has been, I would say, probably one of my pet projects, I guess. And honestly, we're still working through it. Basically, how it came about was right around the beginning of the school year, we started getting questions from employees wanting to know what their leave balances were. So as we started diving into that and trying to find our basis to start calculating those balances on as far as carryover from last year and so on, we started finding discrepancies. So we essentially went back over the last two-year time period from, from the audit report and started from scratch and started reconciling. And as we started going through, we found that there were leaves taken in excess of the time that was available for staff. So we have been working with those individual staff members to attempt to recoup the excess pay that they were, they were given for that leave taken. So as I mentioned, that's still an ongoing process, but we are working, because of that, we're working through all nine hundred plus employees in the district.
So, so your question is, how did this happen? I'm sure. So we have an, it's called ASOP. We have an online electronic leave system that employees go in and request leaves. For certain groups of individuals, we had not put balances into that system. The balances were all supposed to be tracked manually on a spreadsheet. And so therefore, an employee could go in and put in leave even if they didn't have the balance there to support it.
Does the leave have to be approved by their manager?
Yes.
So we have a managerial issue as well as an employee issue taking excess vacation?
Well, the information wasn't there for the managers either. And, and a lot of these were long-term leave issues. So if somebody's out for an extended period of time on FMLA, there was just no balance being tracked to know when they ran out of paid leave. I think, we both think actually, that we are investigating and have interviewed three time-tracking, time clock companies. And implementation of a time clock system district-wide will be a huge step forward for us. And will make things a lot easier to track too.
Per certified as well as hourly?
Possi, not, not for like your normal contract day. One thing that we really want to have, one group we really want to have on the time clock system is substitute teachers because we still have to track them for the Affordable Care Act. And so we don't track them for hours per se to pay them, but we track them hours worked so that we are in compliance with the Affordable Care Act. The other thing that we would like to, in a, in a perfect world, have available on this time tracking system is the ability for people to put in ad pay type things. We have a whole lot of ad pays at each month. So if a teacher attends a PLC meeting or something that they should get paid extra for, that's all coming through on paper. And time clock systems allow us to put in all these job codes so they could go to a time clock and they could punch, put in, you know, attending a PLC meeting for an hour. And that would automatically go into payroll then rather than having to have all of these paper sheets flowing around.
So if they do that, is that checked then as well? Or how does that work?
Yes. The systems that we are looking at all have approval tree processes. So you can design them, set them up to be how, how you want them.
So it makes it easier for the manager?
Yes.
As well as employees?
Yes, it'll, it'll automate the whole process that we have right now because the payroll system as it is, is very, very manual. It's all paper time sheets with the exception of two classified hourly staff groups, which is on a, a time clock system that we have that is not up to where we think it should be. But yes, having the, a time clock system in place will automate a lot of things and will take a lot of the data entry time out of it to where it'll allow us more time to review rather than enter data to catch any potential errors.
So it'll report back?
Yes, yep, yep, yeah. We'll have, we'll have administrative access through the system to be able to run whatever reports and things that we need. And we can also export data out of the time clock system to turn and import into the payroll system. So with setting up those job codes and those pay codes, again, it's a matter of clicking a couple buttons and getting payroll entered to where again, it'll leave us more time to analyze and review and, and catch any potential errors.
Are you, it sounds like the changes that you're making are prudent. Are you running by each of these changes by the State Auditor's Office as you're doing them? Or are you going to wait until the audit in 2019 to have them say, oh, you're doing them the way you should now?
I guess to this point, we haven't had a whole lot of in-depth discussion with the state auditors as to specific procedures we should be implementing.
Will you? Should you?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Actually, they're, and that's probably more a function of our, our financial statement audit, which is going to be starting in January. They will do what they call an internal control questionnaire. So they will do an in-depth analysis of what we have in place right now and whether or not they think that's adequate and make recommendations based on that.
A past, I mean, so as a board, we see all the past audits. And of course, none of this is on any of the audit reports that I've seen in my time on the board. How in the world could this have possibly gone unnoticed? I mean, okay, you've got an incompetent employee and a lack of oversight by their direct manager. You'd think your auditor's not incompetent too. How did it get by then?
I can't answer that.
Good question.
Is it, is it a failure on the, is there any liability on the part of the audit firm? And is that something that we need to look into?
Probably a legal question, right? Versus a question.
Yeah, I don't have any direct question, Mike.
I mean, I'm a hundred percent with you because the only issue I ever recalled and bringing forward was the fact of an issue with Raycom.
Yeah.
And you, right? That's the only thing I ever remember them bringing forward. So I'm a hundred percent with you that I think those questions have to be answered.
So that, that's a question, and maybe we have a closed session to talk about that as a point. So that, that, the other question is, okay, all of these issues seem to revolve around the human resources function. Payroll, tracking vacation time, IFRS, this, this sort of stuff. What I worry about is what's the next thing we're going to find? I'll give you an example. This year, when I enrolled my kids in school, I didn't have to pay any money at all in tuition. Paid nothing. And it just, they said, oh, we're doing this online thing and we'll catch, it'll catch up to you. Well, I actually, I paid it, but not until months later. And so I'm worried, are there other areas that where either people, parents, companies owe us money that we're not tracking well? Are there, is there going to be the next big thing that drops out here that, that we haven't seen yet? Is this it?
I would hope so. For our sake, too.
And part of, as Paulette was indicating, I mean, part of our effort, like the time clocks and other things are to try to streamline functions that are in some cases happening in isolation between HR and the business office, different spreadsheets being kept, different people being responsible for them. I believe the example that you just gave was purposeful. I think we made a purposeful effort to collect fees after, you can probably explain it better than I, Paulette, but.
Sure. So the whole registration fee thing, we found, we, we tried this year to do it a little more efficiently than we had been in the past. We had not been utilizing our online payment system to collect fees other than food service deposits in the past. So we really wanted to utilize that system. And the other thing that, there's a grace period for free and reduced lunches. And it's the first thirty operating days of each school year. So rather than guess at registration time and charge people money that they may not owe, we decided to wait until the thirty day grace period had expired. And then we assessed fees after that based on the status for this current school year for everybody. So we assessed an accurate fee thirty days in versus potentially having to issue all these refunds and such. So because you did pay yours as you stated at that time, you were not sent a statement, I assume, that went out. The district has sent out statements in the last few weeks to those individuals based on their current year's status. And they have the ability to pay those fees online through RevTrack.
Yeah, when I think about, you know, audit issues, it's where you follow the cash, right? Where's the money going out and where's the money coming in? Are there, and so usually money going out, if somebody owes, you know, if you owe somebody money, they're generally going to call you, right? Like the IRS finally did, they called you and it finally got to you, and it's a big bunch of money. And so they got, but money that people owe you, they're generally not going to call you and say, hey, I owe you a bunch of money. Are there places where you're showing big accounts receivable balances that are unusual?
Unusual for this district? I can't say that necessarily. I think all districts have issues with collecting fees. And the limited processes that we have to go through as far as filing for small claims or collection agencies and things like that. But the, the whole fees thing is a completely different conversation, I think. But in, you know, to answer the whole cash handling process, we would like to be a cashless district. There are some districts that are requiring people to pay electronically. There is no cash. Eliminating all of that cash floating around is an attempt to tighten that up.
Is there, is there a different scope of work that the State Auditor's Office is going to do during this audit review cycle that Multi and Corbin didn't have in the last audit cycle? Or is it exactly the same thing?
The audit programs for school districts are the same for every auditor.
So you're saying, no, it's the same scope of work? I mean, you can change a scope of work, you can do the same things, Paulette, but you can change the sample size, you know? Instead of looking at four transactions, I'm going to look at four hundred. And so is the state auditor, even though it's the same scope, same things, are they broadening their scope or is it the same scope as the last one?
I would imagine that the state auditor's risk assessment of our district is going to be at a little bit higher level and that will in turn cause them to do some additional testing.
I, you know, I, I would think as a school board member, I want them to do more testing. Can we ask them to do more testing? Can we ask them to spend two or three times as much time as what they spent last year?
We, we know that we have five individuals coming in and they will be spending eleven days here doing fieldwork.
How many people and how many days of fieldwork did we have last year?
Three people, three days.
Okay, that's good.
And this is the whole reason that we invited for them to do our audit and to ask our former auditing firm to step back to make sure there aren't other things that have gone unnoticed.
Okay.
And to put forward recommendations beyond changes that we've already made.
Good.
Yes. We welcome this upcoming audit. We think that we're going to learn, I mean, our focus right now has been on the payroll cycle. But they will do an audit of the financial statements in whole, not just a deep dive into payroll.
Other questions? Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to policies. The first item is the fringe benefits.
It's the second reading, probably before. There have been no changes since the last one.
May I have a motion to approve 3123E1 as presented? Fletcher Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven zero.
Five point, five oh five point six, early graduation was a new policy that we're looking to adopt from IASB.
Can we throw any of these together? We've got six oh five and six oh five four as new.
Their new number, their new numbers.
Okay, the graduation requirements is coming back.
Right. Five oh five point seven commencement and six oh five point two accountability, test integrity have been amended from what we had before, either with IASB language or in the case of six oh five point two to reflect the new assessments.
As has five oh five six, early graduation.
Five oh five six was a brand-new policy.
Okay. May I have a motion to accept five oh five point six adopted in way of the second reading?
Second.
Fletcher Harris, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven zero.
Fletcher Hyman.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
Fletcher Hyman.
Yes, it was. Looked right at him and said, Harris. We'll give you the next one, Paulette. Okay. So now we have five oh five seven and six oh five two to approve as amended. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Miller Fletcher, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven zero. Okay.
For initial review, policy six oh five point four, technology and instructional materials is mandatory policy that we did not have in place. So that would come back as a first read. And the same holds true for six oh six point six on insufficient classroom space. Mandatory policy that we did not have.
So both of those will come back?
Right.
Seven oh one four?
Seven oh one four as well as, I'll jump down at the bottom to seven oh one point one, we're recommending both of those be approved as, or recommended as reviewed. They're exactly the same as IASB language.
Seven oh one four and seven oh one one, mark this review.
And nine oh four point one, which, that one, we needed to put a new number on it and we integrated some of the IASB language, so that'll need to come back on student performances.
And look how quickly we got to you, Janelle.
Six oh five, six oh, six oh five point eight, six oh five five.
All right, so six oh, six oh five, are we on me?
Yeah.
We are. Okay. So six oh five point eight, media centers. The only change on this was a number and then added school library and then teacher library and media specialist clarification. So, did Marcus return yet?
Consent to the board or do you want it to come back?
There's only like much changes to this.
No, nothing else substantial.
Six oh five point eight, mark this reviewed with the changes.
And then we have six oh five nine, let's wait, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
No, I think we did, can we do that one again?
No.
It's a new number.
I have this one for the list. Oh, yeah, we just changed it to six oh three six.
There's a whole bunch waiting to be added.
Yeah, there's a, the changes added were from IASB recommendation.
That'll need to come back. Six oh five nine, physical education will come back. Seven hundred?
Seven hundred, there was also quite a bit of IASB language added and a name change. So that'll need to come back.
Mm-hmm. And seven oh one?
Seven oh one was deleted.
Recommended deleted.
Yeah, recommend to be deleted.
I have a motion to delete seven oh one, financial accounting system.
Yeah, it's in seven oh one point four.
So moved.
Miller Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries seven zero. Anything of note?
Last week at school, a lot of things pointed out. Let the record show now.
In G, the next board meeting will be the fourteenth of January. We only have one meeting in January. And the high school will be the school presenting. Marina is up next for board policies. We have a couple of committee reports. Paulette, do you want to do the meeting with Mark Becker and MEA?
Absolutely. So on December fourth, Mark Becker came and presented to, basically, and just a summary version of what was shared with the entire board at the board meeting on November twenty-sixth. He, the, there were some additional reps from MEA present at this meeting to hear his presentation. And he covered the highlights, the general recommendations and some of the guiding parameters that were discussed at the November twenty-sixth board meeting. He went through how each of our plans, highlighted how each of our plans are currently running and shared that information. Talked some about the medical claim cost share history for our district and...
Was our MEA surprised at the information?
I believe they were surprised, I believe they were surprised. Mark talked, you know, in detail about our hundred-dollar out-of-pocket maximum plan and how that far exceeds our market norms. He talked a lot about the financial strength of our plan and how we are under-reserved and experiencing some undesirable trends. And he gave us a heads up that we should be probably expecting double-digit increases, rate increases for next year unless we implement some plan design changes. Does that sum it up?
Do you have anything you'd like to add, Sean? I think that as surprised as the board was when he made a presentation to the board, I think it's fair to say that anyone who hears it in that detail is equally surprised.
How many do you do in the follow-up schedule?
January-ish.
And tell her it's directly with Dr. Stevens' staff.
He will be presenting, I think, on January eighth to the same presentation to our administrative staff and some additional representation from different employee groups that have a state mandate.
Hey, sir? We had our quarterly advisory committee on intergovernmental relations today. County was absent. Mayor Greer talked about FEMA valor grant, how they've had ninety-seven applications. A little bit about HABTAP for humanity. I took the opportunity to once again share that we would love to have kids involved, if at all possible, that are interested in work-based learning experiences through that program. So I know that the word has been passed down there. Dr. Lilienthal from NCC just kind of gave an update on the ORFEM with a projected repair date of somewhere in April and May. Also talked a little bit about the ongoing search for Dr. DeRee's replacement as chancellor. Chamber of Commerce talked a little bit about some of their assessment through surveys of the financial impact of the tornado downtown and in Marstown in general. Not including Lenox, I believe. Lenoverding shared that over thirty million dollars worth of damage has been identified, not including Lenox. Damage and lost revenue or wages and that sort of thing. Also mentioned that they're hosting a legislative luncheon on Friday, January fourth. And I think they bring in people at both the federal level from a chamber perspective as well as the state level to that meeting. We met the new waterworks director, Shelley?
Lovell.
Lovell?
Lovell.
Lovell. And...
Lovell, Lovell.
And we shared out a little bit about the IRS situation, talked about roundhouse fees, too, and how that's coming along. And then also talked about enrollment and that we're in the process of having enrollment study done. And you should have gotten an email from me or an invite for a formal presentation from RSP on our enrollment projection study in January.
What have we done tonight to improve education for all the students in the district?
It was hot.
I was just thinking that very thing, you know?
By literacy, still thinks pretty cool. Be interested to see how it moves forward, how these students end up pursuing it.
I think that I respect it.
We've cleaned up the financial system so there'll be money to educate.
Yeah, and I feel like there's been some progress on the transportation department this year, too. You can see the work that's been, it's nice.
Well, my quote for today comes from Norman Vincent Peale. You all know him. "Christmas waves a magic wand over this world and behold, everything is softer and more beautiful." Wishing you all happy holidays. May I have a motion to move, no, let's take a break first. Five-minute break, then back for a closed session.